One, two, one, two. Good evening, welcome to the zoning board of appeals meeting for November 29th. If you could all rise and salute the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call of the members, Mr. Lemonna?
Here.
Here, Mr. Lopes?
Here.
Here, Mr. Pelton?
Here.
Here, Chairman Tucker?
Here.
Here, quorum is present. First application is A 2338 Zorro LLC, 1040 to 1048 North Shore Road, requesting variances from the ZBA to enable the appellant to construct a four-story, 11-unit residential apartment building at 1473 North Shore Road.
Good evening, Chairman, and members of the board. My name is Nancy O'Neil, and I am an attorney located at 14 Proctor Avenue. I am here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Zorro LLC, which is the owner of the 1473 North Shore Road property. That property, which you can see here, hopefully, currently contains a pre-existing nonconforming residential structure in use in the highway business district, which we are seeking to reconstruct, alter, and extend. Accordingly, the project will require a city council special permit for the alteration of the nonconforming use in the structure, and variances for the new nonconformities created as part of the project. This proposal is for a four-story residential apartment building containing 11 apartments. These apartments are made up of five one-bedrooms and six studios, and are small apartments averaging around 500 square feet. And due to the smaller size of these units, we expect that they will mainly be occupied by single people. So this building is designed as a transit-oriented development, more specifically as a commuter building. The people living in this building are single people who will be taking the train into work. The 1473 North Shore Road property is 500 feet, or about a two-minute walk from the Riviere Beach MBTA station, which is just down North Shore Road. For this reason, no parking is planned for the building. The residents will be taking the train, and they will not be having cars. There will be restrictions in the leases for this building that will preclude residents from having cars, and the property owner has developed and managed these types of buildings very successfully. Among the owner Shirley Avenue buildings, there are actually excess parking spaces. There's just not demand for parking in this neighborhood. This is because the Shirley Avenue neighborhood is particularly well-suited to transit-oriented commuter buildings like this one. This is a vibrant neighborhood with high foot traffic, where people are walking to local businesses for their day-to-day needs instead of taking cars. With this proposal, the goal is to have a building that fits with the neighborhood and is less impactful than the commercial uses that could go into this parcel. Specifically, this portion of North Shore Road is zoned highway business for commercial uses like restaurants, office, retail, as well as limited industrial uses. This residential proposal will be much less impactful than a commercial or industrial use, and it'll improve the neighborhood with a new contemporary building. The building that is there today was constructed in around 1900. It's a building that's over 100 years old and has fallen into just repair. And we propose that this building is replaced with a modern building that is safe, code-compliant, up to fire code, and which is overall a significant improvement over what is there now. For these reasons, the project enjoys the support of the City of Riviere Chief of Planning and Community Development, the mayor's office, and Ward Councillor Novoselski, who we have been happy to work with on building design and also in hosting a community meeting, where all attendees were in favor of the project. Accordingly, we respectfully request that the variances for this project are granted, and we are happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing that it's a public hearing, I would ask if there's any proponents, anyone in favor. Please step up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Councillor Novoselski, how are you?
Thank you, sir. Ira Novoselski, 53 Dehong Street, Ward Two Councillor. Welcome. Thank you for having me tonight. This, I've been working with the developer on this building for several months, and I had a lot of input on the design of the building, and we worked very well together. He's done almost, I think, 10 other buildings in Ward Two in Shirley Ave area, and they've all worked out very well. It was mentioned about parking, but they'll not have any parking, and it's worked out, like I said, very well, as in the other buildings, where the people don't have cars. And even if they did, you know, they would have trouble at night getting tickets. They can't get, they cannot get parking tickets through the Riviere Parking Department as part of all the agreements, and I hope that's included in tonight's variance. And we did have a neighborhood meeting, which I do on every occasion, to let the neighbors know what's going on, and I believe they sent out almost 300 letters of a butters within 300 feet, and we only had three people show up in favor of it. Okay, one came as a question, but they left very content, you know, that they understood what was going on, and they live in one of the high-rises down the street, so, and not owned by him. So I would say that if nobody called me, I didn't get any messages at my home, or here at City Hall, or emails, or texts, or anything against it. So if somebody else got them, it was unknown to me. So I'm for it, just being consistent with all the other buildings that were put together. But thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Good evening, counsel.
Counsel, Arcadia Street, 501 Riviere Beach Parkway. Also in favor, the developer has done amazing job in revitalizing Shirley Avenue area. The model works. I actually had the honor of living in 100 Shirley Ave and watched the model work. And when you put it in the lease and you hold the people to the lease, they're not allowed to go to the parking department and register a car at that lot, so when people say that, well, they're gonna just, they're gonna just get a car and park it on the street, they can't. They can't without, they can risk being tucketed and towed enough eventually if they want to keep going down that road, but they cannot go to our parking department and get a parking sticker if they're registered to these addresses. I think for a city that is putting stress on traffic, this is the type of projects that we need to start looking at, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Anyone opposed?
Anthony Pozziali, 51 Arcadia Street, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm actually for the project, but I wanted to, and I'm gonna do this at every meeting, at this meeting here and at City Council, I'm gonna remind you guys that every unit that you approve, we have to have 10% affordable housing. So if you approve 10 or more, right, that's one more unit added to our list of 717 that the city's gonna have to eat. I'm happy, I think it's a great project. I don't want you guys to forget that every time you approve a development, without having the developer eat the cost of affordable housing, we're gonna have to eat it down the line. Thanks.
You're under proponents with just your comments made?
I just wanted to make, to... I'm for it, I'm fine with it.
Are there any opponents? Anyone opposed? Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
I'm not familiar, it's the first time I come to these meetings. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm Dr. Padron. I've been living in Riviere for five years already, and I've been seeing... 25 Hopkins Street. I've been seeing a lot of changes in our area, and one of the things that concerns me the most is quality of life. As a doctor, that is something that is very important for me, not only for my patients, but also, we need a nice community, a nice town where to live, and I see that we are overpopulating our areas. And with this, I hear that they're planning, and in the leases, by the way, leases, which concerns me, who is gonna pay for these leases? Who we are doing these constructions for? Are we constructing for people that can afford more than $2,000, $3,000 an apartment? Or we are building for people that really needs a, has a need for a roof? And that's when I go with him, and that we need housing for people in need. The other thing that concerns me is the parking. Already Riviere has a lot of problems with traffic and parking. Having, telling me here that the people that is gonna be in these buildings are not gonna have in any way cars, they have no visitors, family is not coming, and they're not gonna come with the parking issues, and why we don't try to build things that have parking ahead of time planned as part of the building, so we don't congest more Riviere. And the last part I would say is that, how many units they said, and how many people for single people? 11 units for single people? Wouldn't it be better to have two, three families there, four people per apartment? Isn't that something that is better for the quality of life and to help the people to live, or we are just looking for one single people in this, in this space? One people, which I don't know, I'm not sure if it's gonna be just one. So I think when we propose things, they should be more functional, and more thinking about what is the best for the people that is already living in Riviere. I just see overpopulation, too many constructions, and for whom? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Are there any members wish to speak?
To the counsel that was just up, we're not responsible for the builders in affordable housing. That's something that the mayor and the city council has to take up.
Any questions relating to the proposal in front of us? Is there a motion on the floor to approve? Is there a motion on the floor to approve? Seconded motion? Yes. Motion to approve to include all of our standard conditions, including the parking, that no residential stickers will be given out to unit owners, and, go ahead.
The conditions set forth by the zoning board of appeals, if granted, are as follows. One, if the rights authorized by this variance are not exercised within one year of the date of the grant of this variance, the rights shall lapse. This variance shall not be valid until the appellant has recorded this variance in plan in the Suffolk County Registry of Deeds, and submits document recording numbers and dates to the city clerk and building inspector of the city of Riviere. The appellant must receive site plan review approval prior to applying for a building permit, and the property shall not be eligible for participation in the city of Riviere's residential and visitor-on-street permit parking program. Shall the zoning board of appeals grant the relief requested subject to those conditions? Mr. Lemonna?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, and Chairman Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, the variance has been granted. Next application is A 2339 Joseph Champa, 42 Joey Road, Riviere, Mass, requesting variances from the ZBA to enable the appellant to construct a five-story, 20-unit residential apartment building at 419 Libar Bank Highway.
There's a letter on file here stating that they wish to have a, to continue this to our next meeting. However, there is a public hearing, so I would ask that we would put proponents and opponents, who wish to speak, counsel?
No, other than our request that the matter be continued, the purpose is to have a community meeting. We had intended to have one this month. We'd worked with Councillor Novoselski to do that. Because of the holidays, we weren't able to get it done. We are, we are hopefully having one scheduled over the next two weeks, and there'll be more input on the drawings and the proposal before you. Hence, I don't, at this point, a public meeting, we're not even quite sure, given that the plans might change, given some, some more input from neighbors that we just received. So at this point, I'd be asking that the matter be continued to your December, December hearing. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing that this was posted as a public hearing, I do have to conduct a public hearing. Are there any proponents? Anyone in favor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ira Novoselski, 53 Dehong Street, Ward Two Councillor. And like I said, I was the one that requested the, you know, that it be tabled, you know, for another meeting, 'cause we want to wait until here from the residents and hear what they have to say about the size of the building and whatever else they want to do. So I'm speaking in favor of it now, 'cause I didn't want to shoot it down at all, but for now, you know, we're just working with them to make sure that the building is built correctly and that everybody will be happy with it. So that's where we are. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Anthony Pozziali, 51 Arcadia Street, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mr. Lopes, I lost, just so you know. I didn't win. I wish I did. I actually think it's a really good project, so when it comes back, I hope it does pass. And I understand that you guys don't control the zoning or the 10%, but to be a pain, I'm gonna remind every board that has some kind of approval with development. When you pass these 20, that's two more affordable housing units that the city of Riviere is going to be on the hook for. The number keeps raising. We're at, I'm sure we're over 717, which is where we were at a little while ago. The more we add, you guys are passing the buck on to us, on to the city. So I know you guys can't force the developers to have affordable units, but maybe you could say no until the city council figures that out, because before, whether we like it or not, eventually we're gonna be at 1,000 units, and none of us are gonna have a say where they get to go. Thank you for your time.
Are there any other proponents? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Anyone opposed? Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Again, there's a motion to continue, so this will more than likely be continued, but you have the right to speak tonight.
My name is Michelle Mongello, and I'm in a butter. I own, with my sister Allison Ingersoll and my uncle Albert Mongello, we own, we're in a butter of Augusta Street. We own many lots on Augusta Street. So I have...
At least one address, please.
I live in Lexington, Massachusetts.
No, but an address for one of the lots.
I think it's Zero Augusta Street.
Okay. She'll get that off the G S B.
Variance objection. We do not feel the construction of the five-story building with the setback being almost at the rear property line is in the best interest of the public and certainly not in our best interest. Our development is located right behind the petitioner's proposed building, and allowing an oversized five-story building to be constructed on the rear property line will result in shadows and loss of morning and afternoon sunlight. Ultimately, while we understand the financial hardship of the petitioner, we should not suffer our own financial hardship to relieve the petitioner of his hardship. Ultimately, we feel this proposed variance with the height relief and setback relief will negatively impact our land and our future development opportunities. As such, it is not in the public's best interest to allow the variance to be granted.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Up, then please step up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record, ma'am. You gotta move on. Okay.
Hello, Dr. Padron again. I'm the neighbor of that development, and I think that, as she did, I really appreciate the way she put it so nicely. I'm not that way, but I think there are many other lands and places that are more suitable for this kind of constructions in Riviere. And I not only see it, I see it also as a safety hazard, because there is a lot of traffic going that way. There is a fire there. Who's gonna suffer? The buildings that are around that building, that is a five-story building. If you tell me that we are gonna build there a townhouse, two townhouses, two-story building, five-story building with very little setbacks, that is putting us in a safety, I'm concerned about my safety with that, with that building there. Not only that, you're bringing 40 cars at least, parking? Does anybody here lives around 25 Hopkins Street in that area? Yeah. Does anybody here lives in that area? The problems that we already have and facing with parking right now, and you're bringing to our areas another 40 plus visitors? I mean, it's my area, it's our area, it's our town. Please, just, it's sad when I've been here in here today. It's sad, it's the first time I come to a public hearing, and makes me sad to see how the interest, the money interest, the hardship of other people, like she mentioned, it has to be over the rest of the residents that are in the area. We are the ones that are gonna live in the, in the future with that. And then I go back also to low-income housing. Please, we need low-income housing. I see, all what I see is like just for people that can't afford high leases, or, it's, I don't see this as a fair solution for our town at all and for our residents. Very sad to be witness for first time of a meeting like this. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Seeing and hearing none, close that side of the hearing. Is there a motion to continue? Motion to continue, seconded. We ask for a roll call, please.
Shall the zoning board of appeals continue this matter to the meeting of December 20th? Mr. Lemonna?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, and Chairman Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, the matter will be continued. Next application is A 2340 Zapage Development LLC, 78 Mill Street, Middleton, requesting a variance of Section 17 28020, minimum parking requirements or apartment use, to enable the appellant to construct a 25-unit apartment building at 344 Salem Street, Riviere.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. My name is Nancy O'Neil, and I am an attorney located at 14 Proctor Avenue. I am here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Zapage Development LLC, the owner of the 344 Salem Street property. In October 2022, the 344 Salem Street project for the construction of a 25-unit apartment building was presented to and approved by the ZBA. The ZBA granted variances for minimum side yard setback, maximum building height, stories, as well as mechanical parking systems. The project has proceeded to construction, and the variances for setback height and stories have been exercised. Since that time, the situation regarding the project has changed. New information regarding engineering and technical conditions was received in February 2023, and new parking recommendations for the city of Riviere were issued in July 2023. So we are here tonight to request a modification to the parking relief that was granted for this project. Specifically, we are requesting to remove the mechanical parking systems and reduce the number of provided spaces to 31 parking spaces. This request is primarily being made due to the challenging conditions of the site, which were outlined in the ZBA's approval decision of October 26, 2022, as well as the support memorandum, which we previously submitted to the ZBA. These conditions include, but are not limited to, non-buildable areas due to wetlands and complex soils, such as contaminated soils, and recently discovered challenges such as unsuitable soft infill soils, a high groundwater, all of which significantly complicate construction and the placement of a building and a pertinent parking facilities at the site. In short, the development of the site is extremely expensive, going far beyond the level that is necessary for Massachusetts courts to uphold the granting of a variance due to hardship. As such, the provision of mechanical parking spaces has been rendered financially impossible, and the granting of a parking variance is well justified here. Due to the limited buildable areas of the property, which, as you can see, are related to nearby wetlands, only so many parking spaces can be situated. What we're proposing is the maximum number of surface spaces that can be provided at the site. So this amounts to 31 spaces for 25 units. And we believe that this parking provision is more than sufficient for the proposed building. And why do we believe this? So this parking provision in our data, it's backed up by local data provided by the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, which was updated in July 2023. The Metropolitan Area Planning Council, it serves as the planning agency for eastern Massachusetts, and it's examined parking demand in the city of Riviere for apartments and issued parking recommendations for new developments in the city. So these parking recommendations are based on something called parking utilization. So what is parking utilization? Parking utilization is the rate at which parking spaces are actually used. In summary, the MAPC recommends that the number of parking spaces provided for a building matches utilization or the actual demand for spaces. So MAPC has visited recent apartment developments in the city and measured demand rates. So as part of these measurements, they've calculated two rates for the city of Riviere corresponding to transit-related and non-transit, transit-oriented, I'm sorry, and non-transit-oriented developments. So the demand for parking at a transit-oriented apartment building, or a building located close to public transportation, is 0.59 spaces per unit. The demand for parking at a non-transit-oriented building, or a building that is not located nearby public transportation, is 1.06 spaces per unit. So what is being proposed here? We are proposing 31 spaces for 25 units, which amounts to parking at a 1.24 space-to-unit ratio. So the proposed parking here exceeds MAPC recommendations for both transit-oriented and non-transit-oriented buildings. So the 344 Salem Street property is located within 300 feet of two MBTA bus stops. These bus stops are essentially across the street, meaning that this project is transit-oriented or proximate to public transportation. So we are proposing double the amount of spaces recommended for a transit-oriented building. And as you can see here, parking for a transit-oriented building is recommended at 0.59 spaces per unit. We're proposing 1.24 spaces per unit. This is just their math. Even if we were to disregard the bus stops, the project still meets city of Riviere recommendations. Again, for a non-transit-oriented building, they're recommending 1.06 space per unit. We are proposing 1.24 spaces per unit, 31 spaces for 25 units. And as the provided parking spaces will exceed utilization, we are confident that the requested parking modification will not have an impact on the neighborhood. The ZBA previously stipulated that building residents will not be eligible for parking stickers. If a resident were to park in the neighborhood, they'll be towed, this is not changing. Additionally, there are measures that can be taken with leasing to ensure that residents will not be having multiple cars. In short, the parking modification will not impact the neighborhood and more than complies with MAPC recommendations for the city of Riviere. And this project is still a great project for the neighborhood.
Thank you. Is there any other, is there proponents? I'll open us up to proponents. Are there any proponents? Anyone in favor? Anyone in favor?
My name is Mustafa Faduli. I live in 121 Walnut Street. I'm for the project. I believe that the number of parking proposed for the type and number of units is more than enough. And we need to stop the project in no Revere. Thank you, guys.
Are there any other proponents? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Counselor? Serino, welcome.
Good evening, gentlemen. Counselor Richard Serino, Ward 6, Counselor 50, Carlson Ave. To many people's chagrin, I'm still here for another month, so you've still gotta listen to me for a little while longer. I'm deeply disappointed that 13 months after your honorable body approved zoning relief for this development using a compromise approach, Mr. Zapaj feels the need to revisit the parking issue, which had been a contentious point of the deliberations last fall when the project was initially before you. As you may recall, I wasn't a proponent of the project last October, but I did acknowledge and appreciation to the applicant for increasing parking. Throughout the process last year, neighbors voiced concerns about parking, and I echoed those concerns. The very least the developer could have done was include adequate parking for his project, which he did, and I was thankful that he did. However, I find it disingenuous that a year later, he is attempting to seek to reverse course and reduce parking by 29 spaces from 50 spaces to 31. The concerns residents had a year ago still apply. There's a genuine worry among these people that if there is not ample parking, residents who live at or visit 344 Salem Street will park on North Marshall Street in the spaces that are designated for those visiting Harmon Park or on Clifton Street. We can pretend that that doesn't happen, but right next door, there's a large condominium, I think it's 292, and a North Revere resident told me that when the rail trail was built, the city put in parking spaces adjacent to that lot, and these days, those are occupied by people who live at 292 Salem Street. So, and then I'll get into Overlook Ridge as well with regards to parking. But the notion that reducing parking spaces from 50 to 31 will somehow dissuade folks from having cars or bringing them by the vicinity of this particular development is nonsensical. Unlike developments on the beach and on Shirley Ave, like you heard from earlier tonight, that are situated very close and near walking distance to MBTA transit stations, 344 Salem Street, I don't care what they say, with all due respect, it's not a transit-oriented development simply because a bus line comes by. Most of these residents are going to have vehicles. Look at Overlook Ridge. Overlook Ridge is on a bus line, too. You see how many cars could go in and out of that development every day? Respectfully, whether or not one or two residents on Clifton Street, that they may be okay with it, it doesn't change the fact that the North Revere neighborhood as a whole has made it crystal clear to me how they feel about developments that do not have adequate parking. History repeats itself over and over in this city, and if history is an indicator, we need only look to overlook where, this summer, the council just contended with the issue that we were made aware of, that when the Overlook Building sold in the last five to six years, the new owners have started utilizing visitor parking spaces for residents because they ran out of parking spaces for those who lease in the buildings. So I know that's neither here nor there, but it does, it is valid, because this is on the same stretch of roadway that we claim is transit-oriented, which is just nonsense. Unfortunately, I also don't have faith, any faith, in any agreement that would limit each unit to one vehicle as things fall apart over time as we've seen at Overlook. They'll promise us the world today to get what they want, but just like is being demonstrated tonight, when it no longer suits them or the narrative changes, he'll be back asking for further relief. As leaders in this city, we need to learn from past mistakes to ensure that issues like this don't crop up again in the future. A good first step is holding this gentleman to the agreement that he agreed to of providing adequate parking. My take on this, as Ms. O'Neal said, the mechanical parking stackers are costly, and I surmise that the developer is looking to reduce these stackers to save costs on his end. If this is the case, and the developer can only accommodate 31 spaces, then why didn't he come back sooner before construction started to amend the size and the scale of his building, rather than wait till the foundation was poured, and now you're stuck between a rock and a hard place of trying to determine if we should move this forward or not? And with all due respect, I don't understand how he bought the piece of land with the intent of building something on it that wasn't technically allowed to be built without zoning relief, and is now expecting the city to continue to bend over backwards in order to make the property economically feasible to him. I can't recall, but I believe these are 25 market-rate units. I don't believe there's veterans preference or senior preference or anything even that would... And if I'm wrong, correct me, Attorney O'Neal, but I believe these are strictly 25 market-rate units, nothing to benefit the community in that regard. This neighborhood absolutely should not have to bear the burden of the lack of parking for this development because of the economics of this gentleman's business. And as the ward counselor, I request that you will do the right thing tonight by the community and deny this application outright. I don't know if there is a motion to continue, if there will be a motion to continue, but I would highly suggest that you do not continue this to a meeting on December 20th, five days before Christmas, when we're already in the midst of the holiday season. So I would ask that you... I would really request, not ask, request that you deny this variance. Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Any other opponents? Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
My address is 21 Clifton Street. I'm the Butter.
Your name, please.
James Vasquez. So I was opposed to the project from the get-go. You guys remember me from when I was here, when we went through this. But I am definitely opposed to the stackers. I ran the garage at that location where they're building for 12 years. I know what lifts sound like. They call them stackers, but they're four-post car lifts. And you can imagine, I am right there, there's nothing in between us. To hear those things, eh, for a minute while the car goes up, eh, a minute while it goes down, it would not be good. I don't know what else to say, but to hear that would be terrible for the whole area. Some of the people that are here don't live in the area. Some of us that live adjacent to that, and we can physically see it from where we are, I don't want to hear it. There's no parking on Clifton Street. There's no parking on Salem Street.
Can I ask you a question? I was by there today.
Yep.
Surveying the area. Are you the house directly behind it, or...?
Yes, directly behind it. The big rocks out there, the whole grassy area.
Not the one across the street?
No. I am the first house on Clifton Street.
The first house.
Yes. Yeah, I don't want to listen to it. We already have no parking on Salem Street. There's no parking on Clifton Street. Matter of fact, they sent me and my wife two parking passes, so I'm sure if someone was parked in the street, I would have to put that in a window if someone would call, and the car would get towed. If that's the case, and there's overflow, well, I'm right there. They're probably gonna park in front of my driveway, and I'll call, and we'll have them towed. I would not like to be woken up at 3:00 in the morning when someone comes by or when there's a problem, and someone putting those cars on the lifts has no idea what they're doing, and one falls off, someone gets hurt, now we got fire apparatus there. I'm definitely not getting sleep that night.
Thank you. Any other opponents? Please state your name and address for the record.
If I could just clarify, Mr. Vasquez is in favor of the parking modification to remove the stackers. Thank you.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Mr. Vasquez is a proponent of the project.
He come up as an opponent. You were an opponent before. Have you changed to be a proponent?
I was a opponent when the project started.
Please step up to the microphone, we'll...
I was a opponent when the project started.
You are a proponent, in favor. That's part of the...
I am in favor of the...
You come up when we said opponents. So if you're a proponent, we have to correct the records.
Yes, I am a proponent.
He made a... Mr. Tucker?
It's the...
He was on the understanding that he was opposing the stackers, but he was...
Right.
There's no opposing the stackers at this point. It's... Are you a proponent to...
Yes, yes.
Having the redu... To have 31 spaces?
Parking reduced, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mike Nicolozzi. I own 344 Salem Street, 347 Salem Street, right across the street, the gray house. I was totally against this project to start off with.
Sir...
I'm a proponent.
I closed that a long time... Are you in favor of the project? Proponent?
No, I'm against the project.
Okay, you're an opponent. Okay.
I just don't see how we can shove things down at the neighbors' throats in having this project done, and then all of a sudden, in the middle of construction, we're changing our ideas. It doesn't make any sense to me. I've been in construction for years, and it just doesn't work that way. So I'm a proponent against the 31 spaces.
You're an opponent. Opponent.
No. He wants 31 spaces, too, Mr. Tucker.
31 spaces.
Why are you... Listen to this, please. Proponents... Wait, 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 wait. Hear me out. Proponents are in favor of reducing the parking to 31 spaces. Proponents, that you're in favor of that. Both you gentlemen come up during the opponent section. Now, we have to correct the records if you are in favor of reducing the parking to 31 spaces. And you are. You're stating that correct. Okay, thank you. Just want to clarify our records. Are there any other proponents in favor of reducing the parking to 31 spaces?
Yes, my name is Bruno Navarrete, and I live in 148 Breedenland, Revere.
What... You have to... What's your address?
148 Breedenland, yes.
Breeden, thank you.
And I favor to reduce the 31 spaces.
Thank you.
All right? Thank you.
Is there anyone else as a proponent? Seeing and hearing none, I am closing that side of the hearing. I will now open it up to opponents. Anyone opposed? Please step up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
John Ritchie, R 24 Franklin Street. Mr. Zapaj got several variances. This was his idea. This, he had the duty and responsibility to do diligence on the expense, the noise, the operation. In fact, I stood up here, and I said it was an impractical solution. And Mr. Tucker here told me, "I see them everywhere. It's not a problem." Well, why is it a problem?
That's incorrect. That's incorrect. I never said I seen them anywhere.
You told me...
They're being utilized other places.
You told me they're everywhere. I said, "You might see them in New York City." You said, "They're everywhere."
They are in Boston now. They are in a lot of locations in the communities.
And it wasn't a problem. That's what you told me. Why is it a problem now? And no dissent from any of you. None, on any objection. No original idea from any of you. As far as financial hardship goes, that's for widows and children, not for profit-making developers, whether they make 25% or maybe only 18%. That's not the duty of your body here. The situation is that there's 25 units. He could reduce the number of units down to 16, close enough for 32 spaces, but he doesn't want to do that. And none of you should be in the business of making more money for developers. You should be in the business of the people. You should keep the laws that the Zoning Board, that the city council passes, and with rare exceptions, change things. It never should be for a developer to make more money. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Any other opponents? Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, please.
Chris Janka, 1 Clifton Street. Been a resident for 22 years on the street. How many variances do you have? How many variances on this property right now? Four? One's enough enough. That's all I gotta say.
Sir? Are there any other opponents? Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, everyone. Vanessa Biocella, 10 Robert Street. I'll have to refer to my notes, because there's a lot here. So I just, I have to say, I'm def... I feel like they're just wearing us down. This has been going on for way too long. They know what they're doing, and they're just gonna get what they want. Like my neighbor said, financial hardship on the part of the developer is not your concern. It's not our concern. That's a him problem. He just bought a piece of property. I just saw it posted in the Journal last month. He just bought another piece of property. So he can sell that and get the money he needs to finish this project. He can reduce the number of units. He can find a solution that doesn't involve us anymore. This is, we're done. This is enough. Enough is enough. He's playing games, and it's not fair. It's not fair to us. It's really, this is not okay. None of this is okay. So the solutions would be reduce the number of units. Hmm, you already put up the elevator shaft, you already have some staging, you already have some framing up. That's his problem, not us. He did this in the wrong direction. He did this wrong, not us. To have stackers or not stackers, those were popped on us last minute, and you told us when we were asking you for clarification, like, "How is this okay?", you said, "Well, those plans were on file. You could access them at any time." We are not in this business. We didn't know that. And it shouldn't be our due diligence to go chasing developers and look for possible changes and then have something popped on us last minute. It was shoved on us. None of us were okay with it that day, and it was something you guys voted on. Yes, you approved it. Now it's happening. Then he gets halfway through and realizes it's too much money, but yet, while he's facing this financial hardship, he's buying other properties. Something's not lining up here. I think he knows he has you guys on his finger, and he's gonna get what he wants. So you can, you know, deal with your own conscience on that, but everyone's watching. We're watching. The whole city's watching. Everyone's had it. This entire city has had enough of the developers' interests going before the people who were born and raised and live here. He doesn't live here. He doesn't have to deal with anything. We do. We have to deal with the traffic. At 3:30 this afternoon, traffic was backed up from Clifton Dale Square all the way down to the nursing home, where the nursing home used to be, where there's more units going. So don't you know, at 3:30 in the afternoon, the traffic is going to go all the way down to Linden Square? So thank you for that. They don't care. I have to care. You want to call that a transient neighborhood? It's not. Those bus lines that go from Central Square and Lynn to Haymarket or the 426, 428, they do not go as often as all the other buses. The 119 goes doubly more than those lines. So you can't use that as, to say that's a transient neighborhood just because there's a bus stop there. No. That's not a valid argument. I do have a question. Please, could you please clarify? Somebody, I do not... I would rather hear from the board, please. This is on his application for this specific new variance, and I just need to clarify, it says... I'm not sure what I'm looking at. It's right under the Site Plan Review Committee. Identified the areas, a variance is required, applicant's modified proposed. Please see denial letter, dah dah dah. It's under there. It says, "A, noncompliance with RRO Section 1728020." I'm not sure where that is. Here's the paragraph I need clarified, please. It says, "The applicant further requests relief for all other matters not specifically cited as may be necessary to construct the applicant's project in accordance with the field plan and application. Please see the attached plan exhibit B for further details." When he says he's requesting relief for all other matters not specifically cited as may be necessary, what does this mean? Are we signing off for him to just now, from here on forward, do whatever he wants without having to come before you guys? What does that mean?
As far as the Board of Appeals, they're only asking for minimum parking. So that's all. If they, if it gets approved or denied, that's the only thing that's being dealt with here. Nothing else. Nothing else at all.
So then why put that there?
Because Site Plan Review, when he met with them, that's, they are the ones that have made that quote. It's not coming for the application here.
Hmm, okay.
Site Plan Review has to review it. The applicant wrote that. But Site Plan Review has to review it before... But site plan review has to review it before it's... He can present it to the zoning board of appeals.
I have to be honest with you. I still don't... I'm not grasping all that. I really don't know.
The only thing in front of us right now on an application is to reduction in parking and the removal of those pieces of equipment. That's it.
So we have, in this district, you have to have two parking spaces right now. So he's asking for a variance for the thirty-one because he can't afford to put in the stackers. And so now the burden is back on the neighbors. And I just have to say, the solution would be to reduce the number of units or sell the other property and do what you have to do. But I don't want to burden my neighbors that live right there. They don't... They shouldn't have to listen to this. And again, none of us wanted the stackers at the beginning. We all sat here like they just dropped this bomb on us out of nowhere. But we were forced to take it by you guys. So now this is a problem that needs to be rectified by them. This can't continue to be our problem. It can't keep coming back to us. It's not... It's just not fair. All right? And I need you guys all to consider that. His financial burden and his quote-unquote hardship is not anyone else's problem but his. And that's the only reason he quotes in his application, is financial hardship. It's baloney. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Is there any other opponents? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Robert Pumasano, thirty-eight Franklin Street. I'm opposed to this project. He doesn't have the two spots required. Why are you guys going to allow him to keep going? If he doesn't want to put the stackers in, reduce the amount of apartments. That's all.
Thank you. Is there any other opponents? Anyone else?
Hello. My name is Baldwin. Last name is Leon. I live on Clifton Street. However, I live on the Clifton Street of Saugus, but on the very same street of all my neighbors here that have been opposing this project. As a Saugus resident, I'm concerned, being on the very same street of the parking coming into my side, and I just want to voice my opinion that I'm against that. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Can we just get the number of these streets?
I'm on eight Clifton Street.
Thank you. Any other opponents? Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Dr. Padron. I think every street should be a concern for every resident of Riviere. Period. I want my neighbors to have a good quality of life. I want to have a good quality of life. If the rule is two spots and it's a new construction, why not? If he has financial problems, go to a bank. Stop the project. Less units. I mean, is that easy? Is that easy? Why we as residents of Riviere have to pay the hardships of people that doesn't even care about our city? They just come to make money to our city. They don't care about us.
Mr. Chairman, if I might have leeway for one moment.
Okay.
Because the previous speaker before the lady who just spoke brought up a good point, the gentleman who lives on Clifton Street in Saugus. One thing you all have to consider, too, is that if you reduce the parking, and we do go the route of, you know, making sure it's in the Riviere ordinances, the parking ordinances, that they don't get Riviere resident stickers, half of that street is Saugus, and Saugus is right there. So even though it's technically Saugus, you are going to impact our residents who live on Clifton Street. So if they don't park on the Riviere side of Clifton Street because they can't park there overnight, I don't believe Saugus has an overnight parking. They'll just park on the overnight side of... They'll just park on the Saugus side of Clifton Street. So this is unique in that way than other considerations that you might have had before you. So please consider that as well, that that might not eliminate a lot of the cars that could be coming here. So thank you.
Are there any other opponents? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Any members, would you speak?
Question. I drove down that area today, and I'm looking at the map now. Franklin Street, where I take it most of you residents come from, that area. And it's quite a distance from where this construction is being done.
Block.
One block. And, you know, throughout the city of Riviere, I live in the Beaumont area, which I can say is congested with parking. And I saw every house there has a driveway. There was not a single car parked out in the street. Salem Street you can't park on, of course, but all the other side streets, I mean, it was... There wasn't a single car on the street. And every house had a driveway. So if traffic is the issue, that's another issue. But parking, from what I see, is not an issue there.
You don't have sidewalks.
Exactly. You don't have sidewalks, so there's no parking in the street there.
Well, they use that for parking.
Well, if they use that for parking, then that's a city issue. No, I'm not calling you wrong. I'm not calling you wrong, sir. Sir, I'm not calling you wrong. If you're parking on... If you're parking off the street, that's a police problem.
Franklin Street's one block. Did you happen to see that the...
Franklin Street's one block from the job site. Did you happen to see that there's an apartment building right there on Salem Street?
Yes, I did.
Well, what about all those? And besides that, there is a park that's very popular called Hammond Park. There's special parking on the... On North Frank... North Marshall Street for that parking. And all the streets around there, like Breeden's Lane and all that, they all have reduced... No sidewalks and reduced parking. When the snow comes and it snows, all that area is full.
Well, what I'm saying is...
So we live there. You don't live there.
I don't live there, but what I'm telling you is driving through that area today, I didn't see any cars. Almost everybody was working.
There's six unit... Six condominiums on the corner of Franklin... There's a four condominium building on the corner of Franklin Street and Salem Street. There's a six condominium building next to that. And all those cars often park right on Franklin Street in the evening. Clean Joe takes up spaces. He goes in and out of there. There's business there. And like they mentioned, there's no sidewalks. We would not be complaining if this was not a quality of life issue for us. Besides, the law is on our side. Two spaces per unit. You guys all approved that. You gave them all kinds of variances. This man here told me it's not a problem to have stackers. Well, why is it a problem now? Let them have them.
Hi, back again. Do you live in Riviere?
Yes, I do.
You do? Where? Curious.
Beaumont.
Beaumont? Okay.
We're not going to rebut each other, but if you...
No, I have a question.
Please state your...
So I just need to clarify because you said... You made it sound like we're all on Franklin Street. There are maybe two people here from Franklin Street. Out of all of these neighbors, two, right? The rest of them are on Clifton, right at the project. So don't sit here and make it sound like everyone here arguing against this lives three blocks away and is not affected.
Where do you live?
You can't say that.
Where do you live?
Robert Street.
How far is that?
Right at the end of Franklin. And my kids stand at the bus stop right there on Salem Street.
Quite a distance.
Not at all.
But why does the two of butters are in favor of the project?
Because they don't want to hear the stackers. You guys dropped that on us. I want to remind you of that.
No, no, no. We didn't drop it on you.
That was a last-minute...
We didn't drop it on you.
That was slimy, the way it was handled. It was underhanded, and everyone knew it. And I was told you should have pulled the plans.
Just so that you know, that was not underhanded.
It absolutely was. We were not notified about stackers at all. We were never notified about stackers, not once.
It was in the packet.
No, no. They got approved variances, right? And then we came back. Well, we had a meeting. Supposedly, they changed the plans. They did, and he just whined about money. So we left. That was the end of that meeting. And then he showed us new plans. No, they were the same. He never showed us different plans. We were never notified of a change in the variances till we came here, and we never... None of us knew anything about stackers until we were here. No? So we were notified about stackers? Was anyone notified about stackers?
We were notified about stackers. That was way too on us. We can do the continuum of...
Are you kidding? You want to pull the tapes? Because it's all on YouTube. We can pull the tapes.
It was in the packet, though.
What packet?
The packet that's at the city clerk's office, that we get as councilors.
So the neighbors are supposed to go to the city clerk's because there might be a change? Please make sense to me.
That is what the... That's exactly what has to be done, though, unfortunately.
So what you're telling the residents of Riviere is if there is a developer that might build in your neighborhood, they might change something at any time, so you might want to check with the building department all the time to make sure they're doing the right thing, making sure they're doing what you told them to do? What are you telling me?
No, I understand what you're saying to a point, but the meeting was continued in my... From here. You then had something with the ward counselor, I believe, which the Board of Appeals isn't a part of. It came then... They submitted another packet to us.
It was the same plans after that meeting. They never changed the plans. It was the same plans from when we had the park meeting.
They modified so that they could put stackers.
No, not until after the community meeting. I'm telling you, I'm not...
It might have been after your community meeting, but it wasn't modified the night that we had our meeting. It was prior to that.
Yes, but we were never notified.
What's put in front of us was put in front of us.
We were never notified. You might have known, but none of us did. I'm telling you...
And that could be quite possible, but that is not...
It is possible, and you guys still approved it, even though none of us knew anything about it. You guys still approved it. So because you backed up the point that, yes, there should be two spots. That's why you approved the stackers. Now you're saying, "Oh, wait, no, they don't need two spots. Don't worry about it."
By all means, I'm not saying that, so do not... Don't put words in my mouth, big man.
There they are. They are. They want to now a variance to reduce the spots after dropping that on us.
Okay, so we got to get on with this meeting. Thank you. You've already stated what you... You've already stated. What's your question, ma'am? Come up to the microphone. The public hearing was closed already for opponents and opponents.
It's sad that at a public hearing, you cannot talk and say whatever you want to say. First of all, it's sad that Mr. Lopez don't show some empathy to these people that is suffering.
Ma'am, what's your question, please?
Wait a second. Wait. It's suffering, and they are here because they need to be heard and they need help. And I'm sure, like me, we think coming here to you that are part of our town is going to listen and help them. You should know a little bit of empathy for them. I felt really... I don't live there, but I feel their pain, and I didn't feel comfortable listening to you. And it's sad, now that I see here, that all of you are appointed. Because if you have to be elected, and they have to be elected by me, all of you will be out of your church today.
Thank you. Is there any other... Okay.
Oh, by the way, there are no women there, representative House. We need more women here. There is more consensus.
Members? What's the will of the members? What's the will of the members? Is there a motion?
Is there any way they can work together?
Is there a motion to... It's closed. I'm sorry. It's closed. That... I understand that. You clarified that. You clarified that, and that we have that documented. I'm very well aware of that. We do a motion to approve? You have to speak on the microphone because we're in a public hearing, so...
I can speak up. I mean, I see it as a responsible developer. He has come up with hardship.
We have to call this out, then? We'll call it, is there a motion to approve with the standard conditions set forth by the Board of Appeals? Could you please read the conditions, and we'll ask for a roll call?
Standard ZBA conditions are as follows. If the rights authorized by this variance are not exercised within one year of the date of the grant of this variance, the right shall lapse. Two, this variance shall not be valid until the appellant has recorded this variance and planned in the Suffolk County Registry of Deeds and submits document recording numbers and dates to the city clerk and building inspector of the city of Riviere. The appellant must receive site plan review approval prior to applying for a building permit, and the property shall not be eligible for participation in the city of Riviere's residential and visitor-on-street parking permit program. Shall the zoning board of appeals grant the relief requested subject to those conditions? Mr. Lemina?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. O'Brien?
No.
No, Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, and Chairman Tucker?
No.
No, the variance is denied.
Next calendar item number, please.
Next calendar item number is A twenty-three forty-one. Don Q. Real Estate Development LLC and Saturn Realty Group of Arrowhead Drive in Saugus, requesting a variance of Section seventeen two-four oh one oh A, minimum rear setback of twenty feet for decks to enable the appellant to construct a fifteen-point-seven-five-foot by twelve-point-two-five-foot deck at one-seventy-one Broad Sound Avenue.
If you could just have a seat for a second, just so we can just get this done. It's going to be two minutes. This will be a couple of minutes. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Steve Singer. I'm an attorney with an office at six oh seven North Ev, excuse me, in Wakefield. I'm here on behalf of Don Q. Real Estate Development and Saturn Realty Group, the applicant to this matter, with the permission of the record owner of this property at one-seventy-one Broad Sound Ave in Riviere. We're here seeking a variance for an existing deck, excuse me, that was part of a renovation of this property a few months back. The deck encroaches into the rear yard setback. The dimensions of the deck were recited in the public notice. It is actually less of an intrusion into the rear yard as the existing non-conforming dwelling that is there. The property is on a triangular lot. According to the shape and topography of the lot, the deck could not be built in this particular dimension without a variance from this board.
Very well said. This is pretty much a simple one. I have to open up a public hearing. Are there any proponents? Anyone in favor? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. I do have to put on record that the ward counselor...
Thank you.
Did contact us, stating that she was in favor of this, that she reviewed it. So we do have her on record.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. I'd ask for a roll call to approve. Seconded?
Standard conditions, Chairman?
Yes, please.
Conditions of the zoning board of appeals are as follows. If the rights authorized by this variance are not exercised within one year of the date of the grant of this variance, the right shall lapse. This variance shall not be valid until the appellant has recorded this variance and planned in the Suffolk County Registry of Deeds and submits document recording numbers and dates to the city clerk and building inspector of the city of Riviere, and the appellant must receive site plan review approval prior to applying for a building permit. Mr. Lemina?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't read the vote. Shall the city... Shall the zoning board of appeals grant the relief requested subject to those conditions? Mr. Lemina?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, and Chairman Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, the variance has been granted.
Having no further business, I have a motion to adjourn till December twentieth at five p.m. Thank you. Thank you.